Alright, good evening.
Good evening.
How's everybody doing?
Doing great.
Again, sorry for the tardiness. This will serve as the City of Douglas Mayor Commission Work Session on the September 23rd, 2019. As always, we're gonna turn it over to Mr. Charlie Davis to lead us through this. From the agenda to date, Mr. Shandra?
Shandra.
Yeah, talk to her, explain what I just said, and she said that she was fine. There's no need for her to come down here and be on the agenda. Explain to her that the desire is there to repay that role. However, we're already in a budget, and those dollars have already been allocated.
I don't reject this sort of situation where they say that what the new face put in the paper on the last paper they wrote, they said that it oughtn't have been suspended when I found out. It hadn't been suspended, that's a lie. It got suspended when I had a lawyer. The suit was sent, and then they brought that in. Cause I put my lawyer in my truck, he carried him over there. He told me to get on the gym. We got the red brick like we done the rest of them. So that policy was not suspended, that's a lie. Number two, Tony Paul, I want you to listen real good, you hear me? Now, I got this out, y'all, open record question, sunshine law, I want you to listen real good, you hear me? Listen good now. Alright, this three minutes. There never was no three minute in the work session, you understand that, y'all? This is law, they all five now. It would never know three minute in the work session. It were three minutes with all this anticipation, with three minutes. In a work session, you get to speak alone, you want to speak. And this come out, y'all five, open record sunshine law, Mr. Paul, I want you to listen to you got. Okay, you don't run this city by yourself, brother. I mean what I say. Now, this what it says now. It said that according to a chart, y'all chart, you got that, Mr. Paul? Instead of done coming by Robert Rule of Order, New Revised Section 28, Pardonsary Procedures, Section 2-29, state that the mayor should be decided, you got that? Not make decision for one hundred minutes up here. Y'all got nothing, y'all, or, or just said that a person got three minute in a work session. That's a fight now. This come out, y'all on fire, Mr. Paul. So you were wrong last week telling I only got three minute in a work session. Know your law, know your rules, I am, do the mail. Alright, let me finish. Now, all y'all up there to missus, need to know what's going on up here. You got that? It's wrong. So you kept, you were wrong last week, you told me I only had three minutes. Know your rule, know your regulation, you got that? That's all I got to say now.
Mr. Adams, you share that. First of all, again, I'm gonna ask the question, Mr. Davis, is there a, an executive session scheduled for tonight? So, Mr. Davis, approximately how long have I been asking for an executive session?
About three months, I believe.
Okay. So, do you mind answering me what reason you have not scheduled an executive session when I have constantly been asking about one?
We have nothing.
Oh, have, when, when, when I was told by the mayor that the council needed heads up on what reason we need to have an executive session, did I not mention personnel?
Right, if we have a pending litigation or personnel action that needs y'all's discussion on, we would have a, we would have a.
Is that what it states specifically, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
It needs, it needs a pending litigation that needs our action on?
Right, if we get served with a lawsuit or something we have to go into.
So, so do we not discuss, sorry to cut y'all, do we not discuss issues about employment in the executive session?
If, if there's a need to discuss a personnel issue, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what would grant a need to discuss a personnel issue in the executive session?
I mean, most time they're attached to a legal situation. Cause I mean, the regular departmental issues, regular day-to-day operations, those things are not really issues that really, really good before the mayor council.
So you're saying the only time we've been in the executive session regarding personnel was when it was attached to a legal issue?
I mean, if.
So since we have not went into executive session, again, when I mentioned before it was a personnel issue that I wanted to discuss, I had to bring it out on the floor. I'm gonna do that again, okay? So I would like to know, what is the current status of the appeals process regarding Brett Lever, a former, a former city employee?
I mean, all, all the events around that, all that being placed in your box, you have all the information from, from A to Z.
It's been placed in, in these envelopes?
Yes, ma'am.
That's gonna be a flaw on Friday, okay? So I have, I have seen.
The DA's office and the Solicitor General Office gave us permission on Thursday to release information to Mayor Council, and as soon as we got those released, I put all of the documents in there, sent you an email Friday, that the documents have been placed in your email, come in your, in your mailbox.
So who else on the council has had a chance to review it?
I got it.
You had a chance to review it?
I did.
You reviewed it today?
Yeah, I did.
And what's the gist of it?
Um.
Of the packet?
Well, let, let me say this right here.
It's a lot of documents, I think if the gist of it, best thing to do is read through it.
Yes, but let, let me say this right here, this is, this is a personnel issue, and we try to discuss personnel issues.
Mr. Davis said we're not going into executive session?
But what I'm saying is this right here, it, the majority of the council is satisfied with what the city manager has presented. Now, you have a right to sit there and question him.
Right.
But, it takes four of us, even if Mr. Davis puts it on the agenda, we can call for a vote and not go into an executive session. Is that, is that not correct?
That's correct.
So, my thing is this right here.
But why not?
But, my thing is, we're, I'm satisfied, that, that issue is not before this mayor and commission, it is just not. So regardless of what we decide, that issue is in the legal realm or arena, that's not before our commission.
No, it's not in the legal realm, not what I'm referring to. I am referring to the question as to whether or not Mr. Brett Lever and Mr. Greg Newden had due process.
Yes, ma'am.
And how so? How so? You say they had.
I think that's a question for Jerome, isn't it?
Um, Charlie made the decision. I'm answering the question, I'm asking the questions right now, Commissioner Galloway, let me ask. How so?
They went through the process.
And the process was what?
Obviously, if we're gonna get into all this, I mean, obviously the determination process.
It's all in the packet. Yes.
Okay, it might be in the packet, I'm asking him. I have a right to ask him, so please don't anybody else interrupt me. Thank you. Okay, so.
Obviously, in any situation, before it is terminated, they have the appeals process, they can appeal the, to the ad hoc committee if the protocols and policies were followed. Then after that conclusion of that, um, um, meeting, then they can appeal to a higher level, which in this case is the city manager, and the city manager has the option to review or not review, or just paper review, or personnel review, um, and that process was went through, and then the same decision as the initial, the ad hoc, and the final decision was all the same, and so that was.
In the ad hoc hearing for Mr. Lever, how many people served on that committee?
I mean, I'd have to go back and pull the exact record, but I believe there was, um, five or four, I can't remember exactly what.
Four to five people that served on the ad hoc committee, and what were the results of the votes on, of the ad hoc committee?
They upheld the policy.
No, 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 what were the, what were the votes?
I don't remember, I think it was unanimous, but I mean, one of them must be got in public.
That's not so, Mr. Davis. That's not so, Mr. Davis.
I need to understand.
I spoken with three people who served on that ad hoc committee, who said that they voted that you had not followed policy.
No, that's not how they voted.
I spoken with three people on the ad hoc committee.
Well, I'm just saying y'all was.
And, and, and they were there.
Ms. Whipson.
They were there.
Ms. Whipson, Ms. Whipson, please yield.
No, I'm gonna finish.
What I'm saying is this right here.
I'm gonna finish, Mr. Mayor.
What I'm saying is this right here, I'm asking you not to discuss this.
No.
That's what I'm asking.
And, and it's not gonna fly, I'm gonna discuss it. You all, you all have not voted to go into an executive session to discuss it.
Because there's.
So you give, yes it is, my questions.
No.
I have.
Your questions, you can sit down, you can talk to Mr. Davis.
I'm not gonna argue with you. No, I'm not gonna do that. I'm gonna do what I'm doing now. I can do this right here, what I'm doing, and that's what I'm gonna do.
Now, this is what we're gonna do.
No, you're not gonna, right here, what I'm doing, and that's what I'm gonna do.
Now, this is what we're gonna do.
No, you're not gonna stop me from talking.
The majority speaks, so what we're gonna do.
No.
Miss, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, do you wish this line of questioning continue?
No, we, we do not vote in here. We don't vote in here.
I am asking for a consensus.
Uh-uh, you don't get a consensus in here.
I'm asking for a consensus.
No, you get a consensus.
Mr. Durham.
You get a consensus in the regular meeting. You do not vote in a work session. You don't vote.
So, so, so. So what is the.
Right here, what I'm doing, and that's what I'm gonna do.
Now, this is what we're gonna do.
No, you're not gonna stop me from talking.
The majority speaks, so what we're gonna do.
No.
Miss, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, do you wish this line of questioning continue?
No, we, we do not vote in here.
I am asking for a consensus.
Uh-uh, you don't get a consensus in here.
I'm asking for a consensus.
No, you get a consensus.
Mr. Durham.
You get a consensus in the regular meeting. You do not vote in a work session. You don't vote. Right here, what I'm doing, and that's what I'm gonna do.
Now, this is what we're gonna do.
No, you're not gonna stop me from talking.
The majority speaks, so what we're gonna do.
No.
Miss, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, do you wish this line of questioning continue?
No, we, we do not vote in here.
I am asking for a consensus.
Uh-uh, you don't get a consensus in here.
I'm asking for a consensus.
No.
Mr. Durham.
You get a consensus.
Mr. Durham.
In the regular meeting. You do not vote in a work session. You don't vote.
So, 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 so what is the, why is we, I mean. Because, this, this is a, this is a personnel issue, and it's went through the proper protocol.
No, it hasn't.
It's went through the proper protocol.
No, it hasn't.
You and Mr. Davis and Mr. Adams need to sit behind closed doors.
No, we don't.
And have a conversation.
No, we don't.
This is a personnel issue, and it's went through the proper protocol.
No, it hasn't.
It's went through the proper protocol.
No, it hasn't.
You and Mr. Davis and Mr. Adams need to sit behind closed doors.
No, we don't.
And have a conversation.
No, we don't. No, we don't.
Mr. Davis and Mr. Adams need to sit behind closed doors.
No, we don't.
And have a conversation.
No, we don't. No, we don't.
Mr. Davis and Mr. Adams need to sit behind closed doors.
No, we don't.
And have a conversation.
No, we don't. No, we don't.
Mr. Davis and Mr. Adams need to sit behind closed doors.
No, we don't.
And have a conversation.
No, we don't. No, we don't.
Mr. Durham.
When I?
The chair has recognized Mr. Durham. Mr. Durham, do you want this line of questioning to continue? That is a simple yes or no.
Can we just go into executive session?
There's no need. If you go into executive session, and it is not lawful, then that is an illegal meeting. So, the question, illegal meeting. So, the question is before you, continue or not?
Mr. Mayor, you've taken over what I was doing.
Commissioner Pearson.
You were not within your right to do that.
Commissioner Pearson, I am asking you.
No, sir. No, and I'm asking you.
Mr. Taylor.
I'm asking you, I am gonna, I'm gonna utilize my authority to ask questions. That's what I'm doing.
You need to sit down and talk with him.
You don't dictate what I need to do. I don't dictate you, what you need to do, sir.
Mr. Taylor.
And you don't dictate to me what I need to do.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Taylor, the line of questioning continues or not?
Charlie. Mr. Davis.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Davis.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I, um, looked at that package today, I stayed up here approximately three hours today, and looked over the package, and, um, everything that was drawn up, I don't approve of, let's, let's stop right here and continue.
Commissioner McNeil, keep discussing. What do you say? Because four.
Mr. Mayor, I, um, looked at that package today, I stayed up here approximately three hours today, and looked over the package, and, um, everything that was drawn up, I don't approve of, let's, let's stop right here and continue. I'm not.
Commissioner McNeil, keep discussing.
Mr. Mayor, I, um, looked at that package today, I stayed up here approximately three hours today, and looked over the package, and, um, everything that was drawn up, I don't approve of, let's, let's stop right here and continue.
Commissioner McNeil, keep discussing. Commissioner McNeil, keep discussing. What do you say? Because four voices are louder than one, Commissioner Pearson.
I don't care.
It is louder than one.
I don't care, I don't care, sir. In a work session.
Ms. McNeil, Ms. McNeil.
In a work session, I have a right to talk.
How do you feel about continuing this line of questioning?
It's not a full vote.
Or not?
I, I don't think we should continue this line of questioning, Mayor.
Thank you.
My reason, my reason is that I got my packet on Friday, and I read it, and I've done my research, I've done my homework, I've done my research, and I really believe that we do not need to talk about this, this matter.
Mr. Moore.
I don't think we should continue this line of questioning, Mayor.
Thank you.
My reason, my reason is that I got my packet on Friday, and I read it, and I've done my research, I've done my homework, I've done my research, and I really believe that we do not need to talk about this, this matter.
Mr. Moore.
And I've done my research, I've done my homework, I've done my research, and I really believe that we do not need to talk about this, this matter.
Mr. Moore.
And I've done my research, I've done my homework, I've done my research, and I really believe that we do not need to talk about this, this matter.
Mr. Moore.
And I've done my research, I've done my homework, I've done my research, and I really believe that we do not need to talk about this, this matter.
Mr. Moore.
So, so do you think we should talk about it in the executive session?
The chair recognizes Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore.
So do you think we should talk about it in the executive session?
The chair recognizes Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore.
So do you think we should talk about it in the executive session?
The chair recognizes Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Pearson, I will, Moore. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Pearson, I will give you the last word, but the consensus is, I'm fin, I'm finna adjourn this work session.
I don't care what the consensus is.
Because you have no regard for protocol.
I don't care, I don't care what the consensus, no, you have no regard.
Go ahead.
You have no regard.
Let's go.
Because in a work session, in a work session, I have a right to speak. It's not about a vote as to whether or not we should have a line of questioning.
Go ahead.
It's about a vote in a regular meeting, Mayor. Mr. Adams just stated to you, you need to learn how things are supposed to be done.
I understand. Commissioner Pearson, state your case.
You don't, you and, and three more votes, or whomever, don't decide what I say in, in a work session. You don't decide what I say in a meeting.
So what we're going to do.
What we're gonna do, because you're gonna stop interrupting me. I'm gonna finish asking the questions.
I'm finna adjourn this work session, that's what I'm gonna do.
I'm gonna finish asking the, asking the questions.
I'm finna adjourn this work session, that's what I'm gonna do.
I'm gonna finish asking the questions that I want to ask. So again, Charlie, Davis.
I'm finna adjourn.
Being that you said the ad hoc committee upheld what you were saying.
We don't vote.
How many people? How many people voted along those lines?
My understanding, my recollection is correct, it was unanimous.
Okay, so that's not true. Alright, so, so, at, at this point, at this point, um, alright. Ms. Lever, Ms. Lever, will you stand up to the podium?
No, 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 she's not going to the podium.
Ms. Lever, will you stand up to the podium?
The work session.
Ms. Lever, Ms. Lever, will you stand up to the podium?
No, 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 she's not going to the podium.
Ms. Lever, will you stand up to the podium?
The work session.
They don't want grandparents. They won't.
We, we stay at the jury for the work session.
So that's not.
Okay. Ms. Charlie Gray, Andrew Jackson.
I would gladly give you an interview, you can have all that I know.
Lorraine Gray, Andrew Jackson, and Willie Stiles, and Willie Stiles, and Willie Stiles.
Session.
They don't want grandparents.
We, we stay at the jury for the work session.
So that's not.
Okay. Ms. Charlie Gray, Andrew Jackson.
I would gladly give you an interview, you can have all that I know.
Lorraine Gray, Andrew Jackson, and Willie Stiles, state that they voted for Brett Lever, and not in your favor, by upholding policies. Those are the three names, Ms. Tammy.
That's the ones.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
And, and, and his attorney sidekick.
That is not true.
Well, it's, it's not. Say if you didn't have it. I called and I messaged with Chris.
I was voting.
For her.
You asked me?
Yeah, for you to give me the results, and you told Chris that there were no results of it.
No, I didn't tell you wasn't.
Yes, I asked for some, I asked for something, Chris. Chris, I asked for something, Chris. You said, but it's okay, because see, you're an employee too. You're an employee, and when your claim comes, that you're not treated fair, you're gonna wanna be, you're gonna want some help. You're gonna want some help.
Correct.
I called and I messaged with Chris.
I was voting.
You asked me?
Yeah, for you to give me the results, and you told Chris that there were no results of it.
No, I didn't tell you wasn't.
Yes, I asked for some, I asked for something, Chris. Chris, I asked for something, Chris. You said, but it's okay, because see, you're an employee too. You're an employee, and when your claim comes, that you're not treated fair, you're gonna wanna be, you're gonna want some help. You're gonna want some help.
Correct.
So, Stevie Young is Brett Lever's immediate supervisor. He did not fire Brett. He didn't fire. The policy says you have to be fired by your immediate supervisor. Stevie didn't even know anything about it. You say okay, because you know.
I don't talk about policies.
They have not policies.
Starts with, uh, with the city manager. And ends with the city manager.
It's not a policy. It's conflict. Anybody knows that. How can you have a person that fires you to be the same person that besides your appeal? There is no fairness in that.
It's not a policy.
It's conflict. Anybody knows that. How can you have a person that fires you to be the same person that besides your appeal? There is no fairness in that. There is no fairness in that. And for these commissioners to sit up here and uphold this kind of foolishness, is wrong. It is wrong, and they need to be voted out. They need to be voted out. They need to be voted out.
Everybody live.
Cause it's, it's sad. This is sad. Cause we have, we have a dictatorship. Cause it's, it's sad. This is sad. Cause we have, we have a dictatorship here in the City of Douglas. We have a dictatorship. That's what, that's what they're running up here. Because there is no way Charlie Davis should be doing what he allowed to do, what he's doing.
If he was proud of what he had done, he would allow scrutiny, and he would allow transparency, and of course, he is not proud of what he's done, he knows it's flawed, but he, but we, we're to be quiet.
Yes, just go along with it.
I'm very, I'm very, I shall be quiet.
It's sad.
Mr. Rocker, I have to say, he was proud of what he had done, he would allow scrutiny, and he would allow transparency, and of course, he is not proud of what he's done, he knows it's flawed, but he, but we, we're to be quiet.
Yes, just go along with it.
I'm very, I'm very, I shall be quiet.
It's sad.
Mr. Rocker, I have to say, he is not proud of what he's done, he knows it's flawed, but he, but we, we're to be quiet.
Yes, just go along with it.
I'm very, I'm very, I shall be quiet.
It's sad.
Mr. is not proud of what he's done, he knows it's flawed, but he, but we, we're to be quiet.
Yes, just go along with it.
I'm very, I'm very, I shall be quiet.
It's sad.
Mr. is not proud of what he's done, he knows it's flawed, but he, but we, we're to be quiet.
Yes, just go along with it.
I'm very, I'm very, I shall be quiet.
It's sad.
Mr. is not proud of what he's done, he knows it's flawed, but he, but we, we're to be quiet.
Yes, just go along with it.
I'm very, I'm very, I shall be quiet.
It's sad. Of all my years of studying government, government is not supposed to operate like this. Government is gonna be ran by the people, for the people, other people. It, it's not being ran like that. They have a dictatorship, just like they got a dictatorship on these utility bills, so it's having seven, eight, nine, and a thousand dollar utility bills, that they won't even bother to look into. It's sickening. It's really sickening. And, and I'm sad that, that I'm a part of this. I'm, I'm so sad that they treat people like this.
Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I heard you did, you just did a lot of talking, but I didn't hear you reference GMA and Assistant from GMA. Don't, don't, wouldn't, don't you think that somebody needs to have some, some questions answered?
I can tell you, Mr. Ryan, in the past, when I've contacted GMA, we do have a, a new person of GMA that's over the legal department now, but in the past, when I've contacted GMA, they would say that needs to be handled between your city manager and your city attorney. That will be the answer that, that you will get. But that, we do have Rishi Patel, who's the new, uh, legal person for GMA. I will reach out to Mr. Patel.
The reason I ask that, because I, I, I'm, I record thirty cities with this type of problems, and I just never seen it the way I see it here.
Yes, sir.[1580.02]
And I commend the cities that are carrying out the, the, the affairs of the people like you should.
Right.
But I have never seen wherein the, the elected officials don't have equal share. And it seem like, you know, so I think GMA would be, probably be your best bet.
Yes, sir, thank you, I will definitely reach out to them. Because this is, this is really ridiculous. It's sad. Sad. Consensus of the mayor council to not continue this line of policy, they can do what they want to do.
Fair as they may.
No, they will.
Fair as they may.
That's why he knew. I don't know what you want to do for two hundred weeks.
And why, why am I not allowed to speak, Mr.?
Yeah, she, she filled out a paper.
I filled out a paper and.
And Charlie denied her coming to talk.
And so did Tony, Tony.
Oh.
And why, why am I not allowed to speak, Mr.?
Yeah, she, she filled out a paper.
I filled out a paper and.
And Charlie denied her coming to talk.
And so did Tony, Tony.
Oh.
And why, why am I not allowed to speak, Mr.?
Yeah, she, she filled out a paper.
I filled out a paper and.
And Charlie denied her coming to talk.
And so did Tony, Tony.
Oh.
And why, why am I not allowed to speak, Mr.?
Yeah, she, she filled out a paper.
I filled out a paper and.
And Charlie denied her coming to talk.
And so did Tony, Tony.
Oh.
Well, you can talk online, because Mr. President.
Yes, fine, yeah.
My lawyers will do my talking. And there's two lawsuits, there's two lawsuits, because on Friday, my lawyers don't stop no speaking.
It's, it, I mean, it beats all I've ever seen.
Everybody walked out, all the chickens in the house. And nobody got no bad blood. And nobody got no bad blood. And nobody got no bad blood. 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 And nobody got no bad blood.
This don't make no sense. One person controls four people to walk off the panel. And they left. Like, how grown folks control other folks? We ain't chairman. You must represent your ward and speak for your ward, sitting up there running. I don't understand this. This don't make no sense. One person controls four people to walk off the panel. One person controls four people to walk off the panel. One person controls four people to walk off the panel. One person controls four people to walk off the panel. This don't make no sense. One person controls four people to walk off the panel. And they left. Like, how grown folks control other folks? We ain't chairman. You must represent your ward and speak for your ward, sitting up there running. I don't understand this. And these are the people y'all vote for. And Charlie, Charlie Davis said in this packet, one of the letters he said, he got current from the Assistant DA and Assistant General to release information concerning these cases. What about information concerning the stuff that I brought up? I brought up, uh, months ago, about there was a ledge stealing in the, in the electric department. What about that? He's not telling us anything about that. But these commissioners saying he doing his job and they fine with it. We haven't gotten any information about employees stealing from the electric department. Some electric poles that cost approximately, some of them run as high as ten thousand dollars. And these commissioners good with what Charlie Davis doing?
The, the wording of the ad hoc meeting was, the general consensus was. General consensus, that does not say unanimous, unanimous, majority. What we understood was, uh, one person said that the policy procedures were correct, and that stood.
Right.
So three of them, we understood, were for my husband, and one was for the city, city manager, but the one over the three, but if y'all think that's fair, that's fair for me to talk to you.
They know it's not fair.
Well, if he's released the papers, then you should be able to see them.
Uh, he doesn't say in there who they voted. That was, that was strategically done.
Right. That they didn't provide any papers, because I specifically asked for the papers to find them.
And then they don't want you to ask the questions that were asked.
Right.
You notice nobody's sitting here to answer those questions.
Yes.
Because they don't, they don't want you to, they don't want to tell you the answer to those questions. Because they're incorrect.
They don't want, they, they, they don't want you to know that they hired somebody that's inaccurate of doing what they supposed to do.
That's correct.
So when you inaccurate of doing what you do, you do what people tell you to do. So if they tell you.
If I fire somebody, come and ask me any questions you want.
That's right, and I will answer. That's right. If you feel like you were right in making that decision, that's as I.
I just feel like this, all this controlling, wrong people, you know, it's crazy. How you control?
It's sad to have commissioners on the board that's gonna be dictated to what to do.
It's a dictatorship.
The citizens of Douglas got voted for people who can't think for themselves.
If you don't try to be much like I had, he'd be ready to dust and.
And Mr. Davis knew right off how long I'd been asking for executive session, I couldn't even recall. I knew it's been a while. When he started studying, he still lying.
Yeah, thank you for putting in there.
There is pending litigation, by the way.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
This is the appeals process, that is pending.
Right, right. Then they're gonna try to come before us and, and give us some hogwash that we supposed to swallow and just take it.
Right.
You know? I've had enough. I've had enough. It's so sad. It's sad.
He got mad and. I'm just gonna adjourn the meeting. And everybody.
It's sad.
It's a shame when you control.
It really is.
Everybody on this vote, so I can see how the vote will go.
Don't want me to express my concerns. And I don't, I don't know why the others didn't say, say anything.
Cause they don't understand.
They understand. They understand. It's not that difficult to understand. This is what the citizens of Douglas like. This is the kind of representation, representation they want. Oh, well.
No, sir, no, sir. No, sir. No, sir, I have not been.
No, we said. Yes, we are. We, we, we vote. We are four votes, four votes, we getting rid of that.
And I'm one of them too. So it ain't we.
Yeah, well, well, we need four votes.
Well.
We need four votes.
Not we, Bob Moskowitz.
No, Bob, Bob, I don't know what's going on with Bob, he's been here longer than anybody, he know what time it is. He know Charlie Davis ain't doing right.
And he paid a hundred sixteen dollars.
Okay, tax pay of dollars. To treat people any kind of way.
No bachelor, no. I could do that, Charlie. Give me them hundred sixteen. They didn't want me buying my rings with them. They need to, it's probably not the.
But, 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 when Tony Paul first got his neck bit, he resigned. That's why. Charlie Davis resigned.
What did the packet say? I thought you said you was all right with what the packet had. What did you say?
What investigation did he do? I'm gonna stop just taking it word. See stuff for yourself. And what does it say? The gist of it. The gist of it. The gist of it. The gist of it. What did he tell you? What did they find? What did they find? So, so when, so when I read it, when I read it, when I read it, you ready to discuss it? All right. I'll skip. I'mma hold you to that. Okay. Give me her phone, and I'll give you mine, okay? She was asking me, she was wanting me to summarize.
No, 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 I, I was laughing at the text. I was laughing at the text. I was laughing at the text. Laughing at the text.
I just not have a different.
All right, here we go. Uh, excuse me, if you were not present for the, uh, work session, would you please pull out your cell phones and physically check your cell phone and make sure it's on silent or vibrate? And we're gonna start. Mr. Davidson, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda item. As always, we'll turn it over to our city manager to reiterate the items put on the consent agenda.
Mayor Commissioner, we have, uh, two items coming over on the consent agenda. We have, uh, item two, approval of the purchase of the work supplies brought from the chemical projects. And item three, uh, approval of the airport capital improvement plan for years FY twenty twenty through FY twenty twenty five. Next item, the items four, and this will be the first reading of the meeting ordinance for the Unified Land Development Code.
This will be very short, be it or named by a mayor or commissioner of Douglas and regular meeting, assume pursuit of law enforcement thereof. Unified Land Development Code of the City of Douglas hereby made in standing uniform by many, six, three, the Unified Land Development Code, Chapter Three, Table Three Four, which is met down at bars, nightclubs, convenience stores, convenience stores, self-service facilities, and the Gateways Zone District, operated first time in the regular meeting, Mayor Morton Commissioners, uh, the City of Douglas on September twenty thirteen nineteen, will have a second meeting on October fourteen.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, staff comments.
Just wanna share one announcement, one to remind the community that we will be hosting a chat and chew this week on September the twenty-sixth, six-thirty PM, at the Boys and Girls Club. This, uh, one will be hosted by, um, Ward Four and Five, and it's Commissioner Gowen, and Commissioner Mike Neal.
Next on the agenda, we have the mayor and commissioners' comments. I'll say this right here, um, we've had enough theatrics, um, for this evening. And my thing is this right here, we've helped the city's business, uh, our work session was a little contentious. So my thing is this right here, I would like to forego the mayor and commissioners' comments in entertaining a motion to adjourn. Second. It's been motion in second, all in favor? All right. All opposed? Opposed. Motion carries, we stand in the jury.
My, my, my. My, 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 dictatorship.
Gotta go.
Dictatorship.
Gotta go.
Dictatorship.
Went out though.
Dictatorship. A dictatorship.
You heard, you're part of dictatorship.
A dictatorship, citizens of Douglas, you all do not have a democracy. You have a dictatorship with this mayor you have and certain commissioners.
Don't worry about it.
Moore, McNeil, and Gowen, and sometimes Taylor. A dictatorship. A dictatorship.
Now, it's called being compassionate, sorry. I'm on the city council, Ambrose, I hope that I'm.
Tell him, tell him.
Ignore somebody's feelings or ruin somebody's life because they are accused of being guilty when they're not even given a chance to prove their innocence. And fired and ruined their life and their children's life.
That's right.
I hope that y'all have to sleep with that.
Mm-hmm.
Cause election's coming up.
Right. Yeah.
And I had to vote, I had to be elected in the City of Ambrose. And I have a, I hope that I have enough compassion for our employees. Because we had something like this sooner than happened.
Yeah.
And we let him come before us and talk about it. He got fired by us, somebody there. And we came, he, we hired him back because he was innocent.
I've seen that in meetings.
Yeah, this, this is sad.
They did this right here on this board.
This is sad. It's been said at one of the other meetings, this is one of the worst administrations ever. I've been on the council twenty years, and I can say this is one of the worst administrations I've ever seen.
May I ask you a question? I go to, I have never seen a meeting adjourned like the one in Douglas this evening. And I'm going to thirty cities, if you go to Boston GBR, you'll see a lot of my videos. I've never seen this before. Why, why, why does the people sit on the council allow this to happen?
Because, because they don't have any gumption. They don't have any gumption. They, they gonna go along with whatever because they don't care enough. They don't care enough. If it was happening to their family members, it'd be a different story.
Have anybody, I mean, when I was in Gordon, and they, they called hell in Gordon with Mayor Ann Whipple. And my question is, why have not somebody contacted GMA? I mean, this is what, even they, some of the cities that I've been to, they came down and they, and, and, and they gave training sessions. The Attorney General, uh, Sam Olens at the time, he came to, uh, Meg's, cause I was in Meg's.
This mayor has denied us our freedom of speech. That's what he just done.
And civil duty.
And, that's right, and civic duty. We have a right to represent the people. If they're concerned from the people, we got a right to say it. But he adjourned the meeting. And somebody just called me today, before I was getting ready, before I was getting ready to come. Can you all sit down and talk? Can your mayor and some of your commissioners sit down and talk? I say, sure, we could sit down and talk. But no, after the night, there's no talking. There's no talking. There's no talking. Because whatever he says is gonna be a lie, and I will not believe it. I would not believe it. And I don't know what has happened for Tony Paul to turn into the person he's became. But God knows, this is wrong. This is wrong. No other mayor has ever denied an elected official from stating their concerns. No other mayor. Yes, sir.
Commissioner, uh. I hear you talking a lot, and I'm just being honest with you.
Okay.
And, and I'm not ashamed of anything that I'm saying. I be on MSNBC, I ain't got nothing.
Yes, sir, I got you.
My point is, I hear you bring up a lot of issues to me, some of them are, are, is beyond you. But somebody in the state of Georgia
Mm-hmm.
should be able to come and address these concerns, even with, you said the manager, I heard you talk.
Yeah.
In terms of, uh, executive session.
Right.
Now, if I wasn't going to thirty-plus cities,
Mm-hmm.
I wouldn't know about going into executive session.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I am a member of the press, and they denied me a right in Brooks County during the equipment ten-plus-two case, where they brought him up on a hundred, two hundred charges, and eventually all the charges were dropped. So here's a question. The Board of Election Chairman said I did not even have a right to record at a public meeting. And she was. And she worked for the, yeah, but here's the thing. Unless somebody in the state of Georgia addressed your concerns and the issues. Then how, how would you ever get resolved, how, how would Douglas ever get straightened out?
You're right. Well.
That's why.
The only way we can get straightened out is by the people going to the poll and unseating him. He needs to go. Tony Paul needs to go. Now, I've sat here and I've been real quiet about electing folk. But Tony Paul needs to go home. He has forgot why he's here. If he ever knew, it's time for him to go to the house. And these commissioners that's going along with him, they need to go as well.
Commissioner, Commissioner, I'm gonna ask you a question, and I know this, I don't post all this, you know, I don't edit much stuff.
Oh, yes, sir, post it.
But, but my question is this.
Check on her.
I hear you talk
Check on her.
about what you're saying, but don't you think that this should be out of your hands and be concerned with someone else?
Sir.
Don't you think this should be out of your hands and with someone else?
The people.
No, not only the people.
And you say, on, on a higher level, yes, sir.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna definitely.
Because I know, I know there are procedures.
I'm gonna definitely reach out to a higher authority.
And normally.
Because this is ridiculous, because like I said, my rights were violated tonight by not having the opportunity to express my concerns. He had no right to violate my right to freedom of speech.
I disagree with you on that.
He had a right to do that?
No, he didn't only dis, I mean, there was other people that had rights too.
Certainly, but they're not, they're not here talking about their rights.
And the citizens, and the citizens have a right to listen.
That's exactly right.
They don't, they didn't get that right.
You're right.
This is, this is open government.
Open government.
This was not a handful.
Under the sunshine law.
This is sunshine law that I read all the time.
Yes, sir.
I've never seen nothing like this.
He's violated the law. He's violated the law.
So what do you think will happen to Douglas? I gotta go. What do you think will happen?
I pray that there's a, a new administration up here in a few, uh, how many more weeks or so? January, a few months, October, November, December, January. I hope there's a new administration.
May I, may I give you a little piece of information?
Yes, sir.
That's not good enough.
Okay.
If there have been laws that have been violated with the sunshine law, and if all these elected officials would deny the right to continue this meeting, or because whatever system there may be, it should be out of the hands of a voting process. Georgia guy, I know, I go on to GMA, I talk to top level up there.
Yes, sir.
You, you ever talked to Larry Hance up there?
Yes, he's out of that office of Georgia. I talked with him before.
May wanna call him again. Cause this, from what I see here, I'm gonna post, I may say this to GMM myself.
Please do.
Along with some of the other videos that I have.
Please do.
So, so somebody can help the taxpayers to be represented. As the constitution of our democracy, so represent. This is the Get Two Free Press, I'm George Vosson Rhimes, and I report what others ignore.
Thank you.